Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the June 4th, 2013 meeting of the Glendale City Council being called order at 6:03 PM. May we have a roll call?
Council members, Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Montero.
Sinanian.
Here.
Mayor Weaver.
Here. Flight salute tonight will be led by Girl Scouts Daisy Troop 5701 and the invocation by Chaplain Al Garzila... I'm butchering that. Glendale Adventist Medical Center. Hershey Yowles. Everybody, please stand.
Everybody, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please put your right hand on your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as per all.
Oh, wait there, girls.
Great job.
Don't go away.
Let us pray. Our great God and Creator, we are grateful to be here tonight at the city council meeting and ask a special blessing upon our mayor and city council members and city staff. We appreciate their hard work and all the time and effort that they invest in serving this city. As we participate tonight in this city council meeting, I pray that you will fill us with your Spirit and grant us wisdom and insight. May our decisions and actions reflect your love and compassion. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Hey, young ladies, wait a minute. Ladies, young ladies, come back. Gee, one of you looks very familiar. I see her all the time, holding a microphone. Who's your mother?
Sophia.
How can you?
The mayor's asking a question.
Who's your mother?
That one there, eh?
Well, you know the whole National Anthem. That's very good. Now, do they all have city pins? I didn't bring us a bunch of them.
They don't have city pins, but they've been practicing. They would love to introduce themselves, mayor, if you'd be okay with that.
Oh, yes, of course. Okay, introduce yourself first and then pass the microphone on.
My name is Sophia Grace Beers.
Very good. And next, hand the mic over.
My name is Caitlin Keshich.
My name is Berlin Baharian.
Oops.
My name is Amira Baglin.
Now her. She hasn't got a chance yet.
My name is Sarah Bear.
Mother's up here. Come on.
Yeah.
Come on, you can come up.
My name is Amy Dosch.
Okay, go ahead.
My name is Amy Doschardian.
My name is Anya Wymer.
My name is Hannah Reimersky.
My name is Riley Kitter.
My name is Audrey McLeod.
Very good. Are all mothers up here all get good pictures? Very good. Well, we'll have to see that they all get pins, will you?
Yes, we'll do that, absolutely.
I have my mind on something else this evening, so... Thank you very much for coming. Are you out of school yet?
Yes.
Ah, it's now summer vacation. Boy, that'll keep you going. Well, thank you for coming down tonight. Are they gonna stay or...
They're gonna stay for a little bit.
Oh, okay, a little bit. You can go sit down now. I hope we don't bore you. Okay, may we have your report?
Thank you. The agenda for the June 4th, 2013 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, May 30th, 2013, on the Bolton Board outside City Hall.
Okay, and what is next?
Under Presentation and Appointments, at 3A is Agenda Preview for the Meetings of June 11th, 2013.
Thank you. Ms. Beers.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council for June 11th, 2013, we have no business agenda items for the Glendale Housing Authority. That afternoon to commence at 3 PM, we do have a special meeting of the Glendale Successor Agency. This is Director of Community Development, Financial Advisory, Bond, and Disclosure Council Services in connection with the successor agency's refunding of 2002, '03, and 2010 tax allocation bond programs. That evening for the council meeting to commence at 6 PM, we have a few consent items. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, this is regarding the SCADA System Upgrade Phase II, and this is in connection with Spec. 3442. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, Civic Center Parking Garage LED Lighting Retrofit Project. Excuse me. Under action items, we have three items. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, Lockbox Remittance Processing Services for GWP. Director of Community Development, Brand Boulevard Parklet, a grant-funded project, and this is a motion to note and file. City Attorney, response to the interim report of the LA County Civil Graham Jury, this is regarding the Glendale Water and Power and Propositions 26 and 218. And lastly, we have a hearing. Director of Administrative Services Finance, this is our proposed City of Glendale budget and citywide fee schedule for fiscal year 2013-2014. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next, please.
Next item at 3B is a proclamation designating the week of June 9th through the 15th, 2013, as Flag Week.
Thank you. And Vito, is that you? I was wondering when you said Saturday if I saw the proclamation. I wasn't thinking about this. Vito, let me read the proclamation first. Whereas Flag Week, June 19th to 15th, 2013, was established by an act of Congress in 1966 as a 21-day period during which our flag should be especially honored and displayed. And whereas by our flag's display, we reaffirm our allegiance to the principles for which it stands and honor those men and women who have served under it in protecting our nation from those who have attempted to destroy our freedom. And whereas the flag continues to stand as a symbol of hope and opportunity to those of foreign birth who have become citizens of our country, now therefore I, Dave Weaver, Mayor of the City of Glendale, do hereby proclaim the week of June 9th to 15th, 2013, as Flag Week and urge all residents to honor America by displaying our flag during this time. And Vito, I know you're the one that started Flag Week, right?
Actually, me and my friend, you know, is dead now, actually. I'm the only one survivor from that era that we were responsible for Flag Week.
And the whole country owes you a debt of gratitude for that. Did you have anything you want to say? I'll bring this down to you.
Oh, sure. I may add a few words. The Congress of the United States, by joint resolution on June 9th, 1966, approved HJ Resolution 763, proclaiming the week of June 14th occur as a national Flag Week. And the same resolution requested that the President is to issue every year a proclamation and also to call upon all citizens of the United States to display the flag during that week. The original Flag Week is also very special to me because I am one of few people alive that were involved originally with Bill Bailey of Montrose, the Christina Canyara Rotary Club, Dan Carpenter, the editor of the Ledger newspaper, and Congressman H. Allen Smith on the successful accomplishment of Flag Week. Every year since 1967, I have sent a letter to each of the President as a reminder of Flag Week. And sometimes the White House has sent a copy of the proclamation to me. I have quite a few of those. But not publicity is given. This caused me hunger and shame because of 53 years after the original proclamation, the majority of people who might speak remain in ignorance of Flag Week. My hope for this year was that President Obama was to give us some publicity to Flag Week. And maybe in the near future, we will include in our national calendar this event as a reminder to everyone to display the flag the week of June 14th. This is my hope and a reminder to everyone in our country to put the flag out the week regardless of what is going to be done nationwide and to help to demonstrate that there is still enough good American patriotism still alive in our community. I should say that that was born because during the Vietnam War. And some people, misguided people, they were demonstrating, and they have the right to demonstrate it, but they were burning the flag. And that's a should be a no-no, actually. So that's when we got married, me and my friend, and we started our whole process. Okay, this week, the Flag Week is from June 15th to June 9th to June 15th. And finally, many thanks to the Glendale City Council to issue this proclamation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Take care, Vito.
Thank you.
Okay, next, please.
Next, at 3C is Mayor's Commendation to Glendale Community College Track Athlete Grace Graham Zamudio.
Grace, would you come up with your plan? Bring them all up, what the heck. I figured out as mayor that I'm permitted to do a commendation now and then. And as a person that loves sports, I bet this was very fitting. Now, you want to say something first, Tony?
I'm the one who got selected, so do you mind, Mr. Mayor? And then I'll bring up Grace to say a few words, but I did want to talk a little bit about...
I hope so, because I want to read the proclamation.
Oh, then go right ahead.
No, you can go first and I'll respond.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you on behalf of Glendale Community College. I'm Tony Tartaglia, the clerk on the Board of Trustees, and we appreciate you inviting us here today to honor Grace. We're just as excited as she is, and I wanted to tell you a little bit about some of the accomplishments that this young lady has done today.
And just to interrupt, I pictured a girl about 5'9", 5'10", long legs to do what she has done. And she's the shortest one here. You go figure. Go right ahead, Tony.
So before I start, I wanted to introduce a couple of folks that Grace brought along with her. Grace brought her father and mother, Faith and Arthur Zamudio, so they're right here. Also, her sister Sarah is with us, as well as her husband David, and we appreciate them joining us.
Grace's husband.
We also... Yes, Grace's... No. I thought that... I'm sorry. I thought that kind of worked there. Also brought along with us Eddie Lopez, her coach, and Brian Ramos, the assistant coach at Glendale Community College, as well as Alex Leon, our sports information director. So we really appreciate you allowing us to say a few words today. Grace Graham Zamudio was the first runner in Glendale Community College history and in state history to win the Triple Crown, the 1500, the 5,000, and the 10,000-meter titles at State Meet on May 17th, 18th at San Mateo College. Her three titles account for 30 of GCC's 41 team points, placing us sixth as team finish, which is fantastic as we're concerned. She was a three-time All-American in track and All-American cross-country, where she won nine races during the season and led her team to a second-place finish in the state. She was named to the Western State Conference Female Athletic of the Year in cross-country and track. She was named the State Athlete of the Month in October 2012 for cross-country and in May 2013 for track, and earned several honorable mentions across as a State Athlete of the Month and multiple honors for the WSC Athlete of the Week. She sets new school records in the 1500-meter and 3,000-meter this season for GCC. She also won the WSC and the Southern California Individual Titles in cross-country and the Triple Crown for the WSC in SoCal, in addition to the state. Titles in track for 1500, 5,000, and 10,000 meters during the season, and has held the best times in state and in the nation for these events. Finally, Grace has accepted a full scholarship to Loyola Marymount University. I'd like to bring Grace up to say a few words. Thank you.
Well, let me read the proclamation for her first.
Oh, and please still read the...
It's okay, Tony. I'm just repeating Grace what she said. I tried to capture what I wanted to say. In recognition of your outstanding achievements in track and field for Glendale Community College, congratulations on being the first runner in school and state history to win three events at the State Meet. Your accomplishments in setting new school records in the 1500 and 3,000 meters are truly commendable. Winning the 1500, 5,000, and 10,000 meters places you as an exemplary representation of a student athlete at Glendale Community College and nationwide. I wish you great success in all your future endeavors.
Thank you.
That's great.
(INAUDIBLE) the phone mics. Oh, okay. Well, I just want to thank my coaches and my family and my husband for being like really special, like support system this past season. I couldn't have done anything without them, and I'm really thankful I chose to go to Glendale Community College. It's definitely worth it, so I'm glad I went here.
And may I add, her husband came from Scotland two years ago. Didn't take long.
Yes.
And married. And I, you know, I'm a... Let's see, USC, 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 not you.
Well, USC Law School.
Oh, yeah. And, yeah, I forgot. Another Trojan. All Trojans up here. Now, I know that SC does not have long-distance runners. They don't go there. Otherwise, she'd be thinking about it. She goes distance, and she's going to Ellen U where my son went. She's gonna enjoy the bluff over Marina Del Rey where you can go party when you're not running. So, congratulations. Thank you all for coming. It's an honor to be able to do this because what you achieved is so rare and probably won't see it again in my lifetime. So, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
And now, one more person to be added on to presentation appointments. Jamie Kennedy.
Hi, good morning, Mayor.
Okay, so far.
How are you?
Alive.
Thank you, council. How are you? Good to see you. I don't know why everybody's leaving. So I know this is a place where people usually come to complain, but I've come to just share. Basically, my name is Jamie Kennedy. I'm an actor. I'm a comedian. I've been in a lot of different things, screen movies, Malibu's Most Wanted, Jamie Kennedy Experiment, a few other stuff like that. Ghost Whisperer. Familiar with that, Mayor?
A little, yeah.
All right, okay. Well, basically, I have a movie coming out called Lost and Found in Armenia, and it comes out this Friday at, I think it starts at 8:30 AM, and every half hour, they're adding a new showing. And it is basically a movie about Armenia. I play an American tourist who is mistaken as a Turkish spy, and I'm lost in Armenia and held against my will. It is a comedy. It has Harant, Mikal, Angela, they're all big Armenian stars, and it comes out this Friday, and it's about Armenia. It's also made by a director in Glendale. It is made by Armenians for Armenians with Armenians, but it's a story for everybody from 8 to 80.
Great. You gonna be there to sign autographs?
I will be there to sign autographs. It's at the Americana right down the street. And I think why everybody should see this movie is because it's for all the Armenians that are watching, all the American Armenians that are watching Americans. I've learned a lot about the culture. I went to Yerevan. You know, I now know that every Armenian name ends in -ian.
Well, almost. There's also the other version, the -ian.
-ian. I understand that cognac is basically water.
Really?
That was... Come on, that was funnier than that. Come on, that was... I understand that... Ah, I had another... Oh, I've eaten a lot of dolma, dolma horovat, and I've eaten more kebab than you could ever imagine. I went to Yerevan, Mayor. Six weeks, Yerevan. No Netflix. So, you guys, it stars Armenians, stars me. It's like Greek... Remember how Greek wedding was for the Greek culture, and then it became more?
Yes.
This is what this is. This is 8 to 80. I've had a lot of people in the Armenian culture come up to me and say, "When's it coming out?" So it's finally coming out. I would tell the world, I would tell the community, and it's also opening up in Fresno.
What's the running time?
That's... Excuse me?
The running time?
Ah, it's about 83 minutes. It's quick, it'll be done.
Oh, well, that's an hour and a half.
Sorry, I'm not a cute little girl or a track star.
Ah, but you do. You bring another portion to the... Another, something different to the council tonight.
Yes.
The youth, the runners, and the entertainment field.
Yes.
So thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me, and I can't say enough about your community. It's embraced me. I've learned a lot about Armenians. I hope we all learn about Americans and shot lava.
Yeah, you can move here, too.
Well, I live with those feelings. It's kind of...
All right, just over the border. Thank you very much. Okay, what is next, please?
Next is City Council and Staff Comments.
Comments, anybody. Mr. Friedman.
I wanted to mention a few events I went to this week and to acknowledge the groups that held them. First, I attended a fundraiser for the Women's Divorce Resource Group, which provides resources for divorced women, everything from referrals for legal services to help with finances, learning how to do your own accounting, your own taxes, how to get back into the job market, all sorts of things that a recently divorced woman might really need. So if it's something that you yourself think that would be helpful, I suggest you look them up on the Internet, get connected. It's a really great group of people, really great group of backers, and so I want to congratulate them for having a wonderful event. Several of us attended the Glendale Latino Association Scholarship Award Breakfast, where the association handed out numerous scholarships to amazing students of both high school and GCC students in the community. And I'll tell you, kids today are incredible. When they run down the list of accomplishments that these young people have done in their short lives, it puts most adults to shame. I mean, when I was that age, I don't think I was in 15 different honor groups and nonprofits and pulling a, you know, 7.0 GPA, but we certainly have a lot of students here that do that sort of thing. So congratulations to all of the awardees. Mr. Najarian and I attended the opening for the Catalina Verdugo Trails and the Mountain Verdugo Trails, which are two new city trails above the Verdugo, the Sports Center. Check them out, they're great trails. One of them's a little over two miles, kind of up and down, and the other one is a fully ADA-accessible trail with ADA exercise equipment and non-ADA exercise equipment along the way. And it's a short trail, it's maybe 3/4 of a mile, but if you do all of the exercise equipment, it kind of turns into a really good workout, so I highly recommend it. And it's a very gentle, at-grade trail, so if you don't want to do something in the hills, it's really nice to have just a flat trail that has really good footing. And this is, like I said, it's ADA-accessible, so a wheelchair can go over the footing as well. And lastly, just today, Councilmember Sinanian and I attended the installation lunch for Glendale Beautiful. It was a very nice event, and we had some city staff there as well, and I want to congratulate to thank the outgoing officers and to congratulate the incoming officers. Thank you very much.
Anything else? Mr. Sinanian.
Yes. Today was the last day of school for, I know, kindergartners and first graders. Maybe, the group may be wider than that, but I know for a fact that those two groups, for them, it was last day of school. I want to congratulate all the kids and their parents for having made it through their first year of school or last year of kindergarten, the only year of kindergarten, and wish them a productive summer. Spend a lot of good time with your parents and do something fun and that's also educational. And I'm sure our schools can't wait to have you back in early September, August, yeah? It's mid-August.
So you knew that because your kids are in first grade.
Because my daughter, yes, it was my daughter's last day of school, first grade at Keppel.
Those up here wouldn't know that. And for those who missed, the Glendale Arts and Crafts Festival is a pretty good event. A lot of unique, good stuff up there. Those of you who missed it, you missed a chance to get some great Christmas gifts. Okay, with that, we'll move on. Mr. Salkin.
At 5 is Consent Items, following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
Next, Boonish.
Consent Calendar.
Is there a second? Don't rush, is there a second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Montero.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye. Next, please.
Next item under Adoption of Ordinances, 7A is Ordinance Amending Section... I'm sorry, next, I skipped over Oral Communication. Oral Communication, this is the portion reserved for three-minute community event announcements. We'll have the full five-minute portion at the conclusion.
We're even now. I missed this afternoon, you did here. Okay, for Speaker, Wesley Kloyes.
This is a great evening. It's looking very good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, and Glendale residents. My name is Wes Kloyes, and I represent the Veterans Welcome Center at Wellness Works here in Glendale at 540 West Broadway. I'd just like to mention that our third Saturday barbecue is coming up a week from this Saturday on June 15th, and that's for veterans, our way of saying welcome home to veterans and thank you for your service. And it is free for veterans, so bring your family. I'd also would like to say that on Friday, the 14th of June, there is going to be a book review by Paula Kaplan. The book is When Johnny and Jane Come Marching Home, and she is a clinical research psychologist, and it is about how non-veterans can help support returning veterans by listening to their story. And that is on Friday, June 14th, at 1:00 PM at Wellness Works at 540 West Broadway. And I would like to have anyone who has any questions, give us a call at 818-247-2062, and also reminding you that the barbecue is on Saturday, June 15th. And just to mention, the American flag, when I was in Vietnam, we didn't see the flag very often, and when I came home, it was something that we always enjoy. And the young ladies this evening, that was very appropriate also. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Dick Heimbold, followed by Ron Farina.
Do you need a Mayor Weaver, council members?
I'm Dick Heimbold, president of Glendale Art Association. We're gonna have an exhibition on Friday. It's called Glendale Real and Imagined. It's in the Anzo Gallery, 1125 South Central. I think you'll enjoy it. The real part is about representational works about Glendale, and the imaginative part is whatever the artists want to do with them. We're gonna have some great food from Porto's, we're gonna have a string quartet, and it's from 7 till 10 o'clock. As with all our exhibits, we have a beneficiary, which is for art scholarships for Glendale students. That's it. Hope to see you there.
Thank you very much.
I hope you have a great event. Just so you know, it's the same time and night as the Chamber of Commerce's gala dinner, so you probably won't see any of the council members there, and that's the only reason.
Bad timing.
Bad timing, but you know what? I will make an attempt, and I'm sure my colleagues will just stop by the other nights, because it runs from June 7th to June 21st.
That's correct.
So there's no excuse for everybody not to stop by at some point.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Ron Farina.
Good evening, Mayor Weaver, city council members, city management staff. I'm Ron Farina. I'm the executive director of the American Red Cross Glendale Peninsula Valley Chapter. I've got a very special message for you tonight. It's a taped message from one of Glendale's best friends, favorite weatherman, and a good friend to all the nonprofits in our area. best friends, favorite weatherman, and a good friend to all the nonprofits in our area. And if you have our GTV staff roll it, I think you'll enjoy it.
How are you, and thank you for your attention. I'm Fritz Coleman from NBC4, and I'd like to take this opportunity to announce my candidacy for mayor of Glendale. Yes, the dream is finally about to come true, and I'm running on the platform that you've known about for a long time, putting in that monorail between the Americana and the Glendale Galleria. With your help, we can make it happen. Not really, but now that I got your attention, and I made you slightly nauseous, let me help you have a beautiful evening to help our friends at the Glendale Crescent Valley Chapter of the American Red Cross. They do wonderful work. The thing about the Red Cross is it doesn't require any salesmanship. Once again, we find ourselves in the debt of the Red Cross for the great work they're doing in the aftermath of the Moore tornado, and we can support them, and you can have a beautiful early summer evening. I have been to the last two or three of these wine tasting and art arrangements up at the Forest Lawn Museum at Forest Lawn Glendale. It is spectacular, it's at a time of the day when the sun is setting, you get this beautiful view of the city, and you will meet lovely, like-minded people and have a great time. It's going to be on Thursday, June twentieth, from 5:30 to 8:00 at the Forest Lawn Museum, which is very interesting if you've never seen it in itself, up at Forest Lawn Glendale. Now, the tickets are sixty dollars, but two for one hundred dollars, and of course, this is a fundraiser to continue the good work of the Glendale Crescent Valley Chapter of the American Red Cross. If you'd like ticket information or more information about the event itself, go to 818-243-3121, that's 818-243-3121, extension 115, or you can contact them by the Internet, just by hooking up with Ron Farina at ronald.farina@redcross.org, ronald.farina@redcross.org. We hope you'll join us, and if you are interested in backing me for mayor, just go to fritzcolemansuperpac.org. Have a great day.
Would he like to sit, he and his honorary mayor for a week? I'll stay home and watch him.
I'll ask Fritz that.
Yeah, you do.
The only thing else I want to add is that this current exhibit is called "The Art of the Brick" at the Forest Lawn Museum. It's a spectacular exhibit of sculptures made entirely of Lego bricks. So if it wasn't the wine, the cheese, and the chocolate, maybe it's the Legos that'll get you out there. Anyway, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, and it's, it's just terribly depressing what happened, I guess, for the first time in history that I know of, of what happened to our Red Cross workers over in, I think, Afghanistan, how they were killed.
Yes.
It's never, ever happened before. That symbol of the Red Cross.
Yeah, it's unfortunate.
Just so sad.
It's, it's, there, it's so much tragedy in that part of the world. Anyway, a lot of, a lot of suffering in the Midwest also, but.
Oh, yes.
Good people are out there trying to help, and that's what it's all about.
It won't stop people from trying to help.
Thank you, and good evening.
Thanks, Ron. Okay, next, please.
Mr. Mayor and Council, next is seven A, adoption of ordinances, seven A is ordinance amending section eight-point-two, eight-point-five-two of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 relating to a fifteen-foot separation requirement for tables and chairs in a designated smoking permitted area and outdoor dining area introduced by Councilmember Quintero on May twenty-eighth, 2013.
Okay, is, big card? No cards. May I have a motion?
Move seven A?
Second.
Can I move seven A and B?
No. They're different.
Oh, you're right, they're completely different, seven A.
No smoking in the parking zone.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Taro?
Sananian?
Yes.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. And seven B?
Seven B is an ordinance amending section ten-point-three-six of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 related to preferential parking streets and districts introduced by Councilmember Quintero on May twenty-eighth, 2013.
Do you have a card? Margaret Hammond? Two minutes?
Good evening, Your Honor, Mayor Weaver, members of the council staff and audience. My name is Margaret Hammond. I can speak to the necessity for parking permits in the area on Louise Street. I own apartments there and had a vacancy, and had, could never park on the street. It's unbelievable, it's a lot of the employees from the auto dealers I watched and so forth as to the comings and goings. And also, as it happens, there's a trucks there, a commercial truck, has never moved in a week. They come, they park, I don't know if they live there or whatever, but it's a yellow van, and as it happens, it's parked in front of my apartments, so, and therefore taking up parking that is needed, because most of those old buildings, like mine, are a hundred years old, and do not, they're lucky if they have one parking space per apartment. So I do appreciate the fact that you are looking into and have taken into consideration that we do need some relief in that area. The other thing is, as far as the charges, I can't quite remember, although I did attend that meeting, and I think I was here and talked about it, that there's a very low fee charged in other parts of, or in North Glendale or other parts of Glendale, but it's going to be twenty-five dollars per parking, and I just want to know if that's going to be over the whole city, the fees are going to be adjusted for the whole city, or is it just going to be the areas that are new, get new permits at this time? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that in fact is one of the recommendations we put in the new fee schedule, is to increase that fee to twenty-five dollars for all applicants.
Thank you. Now, is there a motion on seven B?
Just a quick question to the chairman. What's the rule on how long a vehicle can be parked at a single spot?
Seventy-two hours? Thirty-six?
Absent, absent a restriction, seventy-two hours?
So seventy-two hours, anything beyond seventy-two hours can be, what, reported to the police, and who, who do the residents have to contact in order to take care of that problem?
Police Department.
Yeah, okay, seventy-two hours.
I think there's a special ordinance for commercial vehicles, if I'm not mistaken.
But it's absent a special regulation.
That's right, correct, semis and large vehicles. We have large signs at all the entrances to the city specifically stating what our restrictions are.
Move seven B?
Mr. Sir, roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Taro?
Sananian?
Yes.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. Next, please.
Next item, at eight, A is Director of Public Works regarding levy of annual assessment and preparation of the engineer's report for fiscal year 2013-14 for the North San Fernando Road Corridor Landscape Maintenance District. At eight A one is a resolution initiating the fiscal year 2013-14 levy of annual assessment and ordering the preparation of the engineer's report. A two is a resolution preliminary approving the engineer's report for the fiscal year 2013-14 levy and collection of annual assessments. A three is a resolution declaring city council intention to levy and collect the annual assessment for fiscal year 2013.
This is an annual thing that we do. I have no cards at all, but my colleagues need a report. Now, is there a motion on eight A, one, two, and three?
No move.
Second?
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Taro?
Sananian?
Yes.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. Next, please.
Next is oral communication. Discussion is limited, item is not part of this agenda, each speaker will be allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but that will be noted by our decision. City manager, mayor for the matter, to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Honorable first speaker, Harvey Pearson. Now, you get your five minutes tonight, Harvey. All right. Let me know when I go over. Mayor Weaver, honorable councilmembers, my name is Harvey Pearson. May I rhetorically suggest that we have a sort of second invocation, retroactively and or proactively, on behalf of those current multi-unit rental nonsmokers who will have to suffer for at least another year from unit to unit drifting secondhand smoke that fouls the air in their apartment units. I remember well how about a year ago at this time, it was reported that such a nonsmoking tenant was virtually in tears in front of many of you who are sitting here now, trying to, over how bad it had gotten, the secondhand smoke as a nuisance, which actually the health hazard in her unit had become. And now what has happened to her, might we wonder? Well, maybe she's just been too sick to come this year, to have the energy to try and even fight for her right to unpolluted air in her own home. Now, I would wish that if she's moved, that she has been lucky enough to not fallen into another similar situation. And if I had the time, I don't know, talking about this, you have to catch a smoker in the act issue, so if you call the police, the radio's playing too loud in the unit, the police come out, they don't have to actually see the person playing the radio too loud, they can hear it through the door, using their ears, and by the same token, police came out, and the smoker is inside the unit, assuming one of these new buildings, that can smell it in the hallway, it comes out through the door, it comes out through the crack, and, and not only that, but the smoke inside an apartment dissipates much more slowly than like in a rest, outdoor restaurant area, so the person might stall around for five minutes before letting the cops in, but still smell the secondhand smoke. That should be evidence, if, if the ears work on loud radio playing, the nose can work for evidence on secondhand smoke. Good evening. Thank you. Last speaker, Margaret Hammond.
Good evening again, Mayor Weaver, my name is Margaret Hammond, longtime resident of Glendale. By the way, although Mr. Zern has left at the moment, I do want to say congratulations to him regarding San Fernando Road. I know I did a lot of complaining regarding how terrible it looked for years, and the plantings along there are really nice, I mean, it really adds to the, okay, Steve.
He'll take any compliments.
It really adds to the, pardon? I'm sorry, it really adds to, really, it does, driving, I go up and down, I use it a lot, and it really does make it a big difference, thank you, that you've maintained it and tried to keep it out. I want to talk about the free bulky item pickup, 818-548-3916, and some items are still down there on Boynton and Palmer and whatnot in front of the apartments. Just remember, fifty percent of the city lives in that area and their apartments, so we really do need some more attention regarding that bulky item. I don't know how you can do it or what you can do about it, but it's, well, I can't go up and down every street and phone, hey, I've got other meetings to attend to, but I'm just saying. Now, the next thing is, I have a new tenant, and she was really disturbed about the fact that she was charged a trash fee, and of course, I said, well, that's the city, I'm not charging you, I pay fifty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents per month for my trash bin. And if I didn't pay that, I would have all those bins, and those people would be responsible to take their trash in and out. So what I would like to know is, where are those fees that are charged by the city, where are they in an escrow account somewhere? Because that's double dipping. I'm paying for the pickups, for them, for the trash bin, and they are still paying sixteen dollars a month for nothing. I've talked about this for ten years, and I believe in LA, they made them return the fees for doing that. That's double dipping, it's like getting your car washed and nobody washes it, right? But you're charged anyway, that's not fair. All right, I'm not going to go further, I've talked about it, and unfortunately, the young lady is kind of, we're kind of going back and forth on it. Okay, and I'd like to know, where are all the tenants in Glendale? Stand up, how many tenants there have to be, probably at least fifty thousand. Figure fifty thousand times sixteen dollars a month, that's a heck of a lot of money. Where is it going? All right, and then there's the lot at like 999 Palmer, and they knocked down a lovely little cottage, and now it's nothing but a dirt parking lot for used cars with a torn blue tarp on the fence, it's absolutely crummy. Now, the city spent like a million bucks to, for that gas station to put it in, that little park, and doing upgrading on Palmer Park, and here we have, in the area, across from the housing, the Habitat Housing, here's this crummy parking lot. It's unbelievable, I don't even know if somebody's living in a van on there, but, and I've talked about it, and I can't seem to get anybody to pay attention to me about it. It's destroying that, that little section in there, all the money that was spent to upgrade it and pay under whatever. Now, I happen to be a big supporter on Monday, Memorial Day, of the veterans, and I'm sorry Mr. Quintero isn't here, because, okay, let us support the veterans, there are groups, and unfortunately, I went and gave all my information to a friend of mine that's in Lake Forest to take to the American Legion and so forth. Mr. Quintero, that day, talked about the groups that are going to be giving assistance to veterans for health, for housing, whatnot, and I went and gave away the darn brochure on it, and other than wellness does do a job, but there's going to be several groups get together, and it'll be very powerful. And I myself, and this is no big deal, but, that received a gift today, I was being president for a group for, and I'm blind for years, I'm going to say, okay, I took the money, and I talked to my group about it, and I said, I'm going to donate, donate, I'm going to find, be one of the first, I'm going to join in. I think we ought to all be doing it. There's a lot of those poor guys are homeless, they really are, and if you go to the homeless, you can see them, I've done it. So what I'm saying is, we really need to support these, the coalition for the veterans in Glendale, and I think everybody out there ought to be, realize how lucky we are that those guys were willing to go and serve for their country, and allow them be injured, and have, you know, mental and health problems, and come back with nowhere to live, a lot of them, their wives have divorced them, their families are broken up, so let's support them, and I'm hoping I'm going to get the information from Mr. Quintero. Thank you very much, I appreciate you listening to me.
Is it possible, after all these years, that the staff or somebody could kind of look at the double dipping or give Margaret an answer sometime?
Mr. Mayor, I've answered that question in this form.
Do you have?
Every single time it's come up, I've given it to the previous city manager several times in writing, I'd be happy to go through it again now.
Well.
Actually, I don't know what the answer is, I apologize. First, let's, let's take the LA issue. The city of LA billed every single resident in the city of Los Angeles for trash collection services, whether you had their services or not. Their theory being now, they say it was a computer error, but they paid a pretty hefty fine for what they did. Their, their job was, they were going to wait till a customer called and said, we don't have your service, and said, oh, okay, we'll take you off, but that ended in a big debacle. The situation we're in here is, Ms. Hammond chooses to rent a bin from the city. That's, that's her choice, she rents that bin, and that's the fee. Every resident in the city pays what's called a basic refuse rate charge. That charge covers, among other things, the least of it, I can tell you, is refuse collection, street sweeping, recycling center, part of the landfill management. The bulky item collection that Ms. Hammond talks about every, every week, or talks about frequently, is paid for out of that, that same fund. So it pays a lot of different programs, and that's something that's been upheld legally since, we've been doing it since nineteen sixty-one.
That's every unit?
Every, every resident, right.
And not every person, it's every unit?
It's every unit, so depending on what size of your facility, single-family has one, you know, multifamily units, two to, two to four have one, five or more have another rate.
Okay, I guess that answers that question.
So if Ms. Hammond chose not to rent that bin, she could?
She could, yeah, that's correct. She would, she'd have the option of renting it from somebody else. As she mentioned, there is, in some cases, the option of putting out automated containers, the same containers that residential folks have, but we tend not to do that in big facilities, because, you know, when you have fifteen or sixteen of those cans, it can become quite burdensome.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Zern. Any other comments? Okay, do we have any new business?
We do have new business, there's a motion I'd like to read into record, and hopefully.
Like to move?
Like to move that in connection with the application to the Attorney General for leave to sue Inco Toronto to challenge Councilmember Quintero's title to office filed by Realtor John Rondo and Mariano Rotas, and any subsequent litigation that results, the city council hereby authorizes the city attorney. the city council hereby authorizes the city attorney, subject to the conditions below, to waive the attorney-client privilege relating to the legal opinion of the city attorney dated September 9, 2008, relating to the application of City Charter Article 6, Section 12. The city attorney is authorized to waive the privilege only in the event the city attorney determines that waiver is necessary to advance the city's position in the subject application to the Attorney General or resulting litigation, and thereafter submits the opinion in the record before the Attorney General or in subsequent litigation. The waiver pertains only to that specific legal opinion dated September 9, 2008, and the attorney-client privilege is not otherwise waived in regard to any other aspect of the Inco Toronto challenge or in any other matter.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Taro.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye, next, please. Turn it, is there a motion to adjourn?
Um.
Is there a second?
Second.
Turn it, 6:54.